All right, welcome everybody to the City of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission meeting for September. I'm glad everybody got the memo about sitting on this side versus this side. I don't know what this guy over here did. It'd be nice to show them a little love, so if you... When you leave, say hi to them. All right, we'll get started. Do I have a motion for the minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. And seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, these are opportunity for you to speak to the commission on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If you want to do that, please come forward, state your name and where you live. All right, we'll move on. All right, thank you. Staff, is there any announcements?
No, sir.
All right. We're rocking. All right, anybody in the audience who wants to place items on the agenda that's not on tonight's agenda, please come forward. Okay, you all making it easy. All right, we have tonight a consent agenda. We're going to break this into two agendas, initial and secondary. And these are items for those in the audience that are non-controversial, they will vote all in one block. So I'm going to start with the initial consent, which would be items that Ms. Gregory and Mr. Franks are going to recuse themselves from, and that would be items five, 14, and 15. So does anyone in the audience, or staff, or commission, want to pull those items from the consent?
I have five as non-consent.
Oh, sorry. Let's go back to... That's two, I'm sorry. Two, 14, and 15. My mistake, thank you. All right, then, is there a motion to approve that initial consent agenda?
Move for approval with staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. Now, for our main consent agenda, I want to start by asking the audience, is there someone here that wants to speak on item number 18? It's been requested to defer till December, but if you're here to speak on it, let me know, and I won't put it on consent for deferral. Okay, I see none, and we're going to add that to consent. 18 will be on consent to defer to December 17th. So if you could note that in your motion when you make a motion. All right, consent right now is items three, four, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 18. Anyone in the audience, staff, or commission, want to pull items from the consent? All right, I see none, I'll take a motion, please.
Move for approval.
Recommended by staff with deferral of number 18 to the...
December 17th.
December 17th.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it. All right, then we will move to item number five, which is ordinance 2015-52, ordinance to rezone 21.31 acres into the Hife Overlay District for the properties located within Cool Springs East, subdivision 501 and 1,000 Corporate Center Drive. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I need to re-cuse myself.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Lisa.
The applicant is requesting to be included within the Hife Overlay District that would allow them to build to the maximum allowable building height of 12 stories. This site is surrounded by parcels within the HTO and is an appropriate area of the city to extend the HTO. Staff recommends favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item other than the applicant? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
There is. Jeff Hines with Little John. And we are in agreement with staff comments. If we need to answer any questions, we certainly will.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Thank you, folks.
Item number six, consideration of ordinance 2015-50 to be entitled in ordinance to rezone 7.43 acres from State Residential to Residential 3, R3 District for the properties located in 1034 and 1040 Carlisle Lane. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The proposed zoning, R3, is supported by the land use plan. At this density, the property could develop at a maximum of 22 units, although the proposed PUD for this property is only proposing 20 units. With this proposed increase in the number of lots, there is a concern for the health, safety, and welfare of these residents. The alignment and rural cross-section of Carlisle Lane are in need of costly upgrades. Since it is not an arterial roadway, the road impact fees cannot be used for improving this street. Funding for the improvements will need to be identified and scheduled in conjunction with the city's capital investment program. If the planning commission recommends approval of ordinance 2015-50, then is recommended that conditions be placed on any future plan for this site that address the needs for improvement to Carlisle Lane. Therefore, is a recommendation to... For the disapproval of ordinance 2015-50 until construction of safety improvements to Carlisle Lane have begun.
All right, thank you. Is anyone in the audience other than the applicant that wants to speak? You come forward, please. Tell us your name, where you live, and try to take about two minutes, or less.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Dana Gill. I live at 1044 Carlisle Lane, which is the northern border of this property. My property line will go the extent of the development. And I understand there's been an alleyway, but I spoke with Mr. Gamble, and I want to thank the city for working with them and not requiring that to go forward all the way to the property line, but just simply be dedicated. Okay, so I appreciate you taking that into consideration. And I just simply want to say that I never thought that I would speak in favor of a development because I like the rural feel around my property. However, what Mr. Melz is proposing to do is, I feel, will preserve that to the best that it could be with the development going in next door. And it is only 20 homes, and he does live on the road, so I would ask that you would vote in favor of it. I know that BOMA will make the ultimate decision on that, but I just want to say that my husband and I support the development as it's been presented thus far, and I know that in the next 10 years, it probably will be developed, and the next developer could put 25 homes right on my property line, and so for that reason, we're in favor. And thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me, anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Bill Qualley. I live at 163 Cornerstone Circle. I'll be... My backyard will be up against this division. I'm just trying to catch up on things. I want to make sure that there's been an extensive traffic study done on this road. I'm assuming there has been, to count both the cars and the bicycles. This is extremely busy road. It seems to be a connector for West Haven, a lot of West Haven traffic, and a lot of folks come down from Boyd &amp; Old Drive down this road. And so like to have a lot of attention put on Carlisle, make that the best road it can be to accommodate both the bicycles and the traffic. Also, when we're doing the construction, to keep in mind of the... Of that usage and to allow some type of encouragement or some type of mitigation to the traffic so the traffic can continue to flow on that street. It's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Look, Mr. Man, Greg Gamble, representing the applicant, Deer Creek. On this proposal for 20 lots on approximately seven acres along Carlisle Road, Carlisle Lane, if I might, I'd like to talk a little bit about the issue that we're in tonight, and I'd like to tie the rezoning and the development plan together, and I believe that staff is looking really at both of these together at the same time. We certainly understand the issue. Carlisle Lane has curvature and a cross-section, more rural in character, but the curvature of the road does not currently meet the city's geometry or standards for development. This subdivision, Cardell Village, is not the first development proposed within this area, clearly. There are other developments. As Paul said, we'd love to go back in time and be able to treat Carlisle Lane differently. We didn't, we haven't, and here we are. We have heard from the neighbors, we've worked very closely with the neighbors in developing a plan very compatible with this area and compatible with the land use plan. We would certainly appreciate tonight your endorsement of the sensitivity that we've had in working with the community and the neighborhood on the plan that we've put together. We do plan to move ahead to BOMA, working closely with Vernon and Paul. We have a few options in front of us, the developer does, a few options in front of him, on addressing, improving Carlisle. One of those is to add an additional fee for collector roads. And obviously, this takes quite a bit of discussion with the board and mayor and alderman. We recognize that. But as far as the context of the plan, the relationship of the plan to the neighborhood, we'd certainly like to hear some feedback from the planning commission on that tonight. If it's possible to endorse our plan with the condition of approval that certain items are approved by BOMA, we would certainly appreciate that consideration.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Based on the staff's recommendation, I'm going to move for disapproval of the recommendation... How about a recommendation of disapproval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman?
So you're in agreement with staff, is what you're saying, is what I understand?
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it? Nope. Michael Orr is voting no, but otherwise, all ayes?
It can still go to...
Yeah.
Without a recommendation.
That's right. Now, Kristen, do I consider item seven?
Yes, sir.
As well? Okay. Then we will move to item seven, which is connected to this. It's the development plan recommendation. This is consideration of resolution 2015-79, a resolution approving a development plan for Cardell Village, PUD subdivision. Staff?
Yes, and based on the planning commission's recommendation for disapproval of the associated rezoning, a disapproval of this resolution is also recommended.
Okay.
I make that motion off.
Well, let's see if anybody in the audience wants to speak to this first. Anybody else in the audience have any comments?
Page four.
That'd be you.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Good evening.
You're not the applicant, right?
Vernon Girth is Assistant City Administrator, and Paul and I want to share a little bit more in detail what we've started to experience, if we could. You may recall, when this particular application came to the joint workshop, I had mentioned that we're starting to see development push out into what has been a rural part of our community. And what we see here with Carlisle Lane is starting to arise more frequently, and Paul's going to share with you some of those areas within our community very briefly. But the point is that, as you've seen, you've had a resident and an applicant work closely with staff to develop a plan for this property that coincides with our land use plan and development regulations. Actually, an applicant neighbor spoke in support of that. Unfortunately, Carlisle Lane needs some improvements, not just for capacity, for safety. And because of the lack of infrastructure, our team can't recommend approvals. Now, in the staff report that you've been provided, myself and Paul have met on several occasions with Mr. Melz, the applicant, and Greg Gamble, his lead design professional, and talked about this situation. Greg had mentioned just on the previous item that the discussion of how we address these things of collector roads, unimproved collector roads that need to be improved both for safety and capacity, as people look to maximize the use of their property, is a discussion with the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Indeed, it is. It's also a board with the... Discussion with the development community and others in our community because it's something that we've got to face, or else staff will be making similar recommendations of that to approve development until there's a commitment to improve roads like Carlisle Lane. Briefly, just wanted to throw out to you, what are some of the alternatives? And actually, the applicant had spoke and even wrote a letter that they're in support of providing some additional funds. And one of the one that they recommended was... It's similar to a recommendation and some of the work that Duncan and Associates, who has created and reevaluated our road impact fee ordinance to include collector roads into that framework. And that's where the recommendation came from, of them paying that additional fee. There is a framework that we asked Duncan Associates to look at back in 2014 of what that might look like in way of additional impact fees should the Board of Mayor and Alderman decide to try to include collectors. The decision was not to include it at that time. We realized at that time this type of situation would arise. Right now, as you know, the road impact fee ordinance and the fees collected are for improving the capacity of arterial roads only. The other option that we look critically at with this development are what improvements could minimally be done to improve the safety of Carlisle Lane. Well, we outline those, and they're pretty darn expensive for somebody trying to develop this property with 20 homes, and it's simply not realistic. In areas of the community where we have rural cross-sections of collector roads or roads of this nature, and where there's property, large parcels, the opportunity, when those large parcels redevelop, to have those roads approved, excuse me, is more realistic. But that's not the case throughout our community. We have many parcels with four, five, six, 10 acres, that there's no way that we can require those types of improvements to be made. So we're glad you're moving this on to the alderman. It's definitely a discussion that we need to have because, as Greg mentioned, and as Mr. Melz and Greg have also recognized, they're caught in the middle. We've approved some other developments in this area, and it's time that we address this as a community. So I'm going to let Paul briefly share an illustration that shows you other areas and the problem we're having, just to give you a little bit of background at this time. It'll be something that we definitely come back for. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Vernon. As Vernon stated and Amy stated, the plan is great, the neighbors seem to be in support of it, the infrastructure just isn't there. And we were very transparent with the applicant when they came in. There's Rich &amp; Close just to the north and Blossom Park that have recently come in, and we've approved those developments. And those developments did dedicate right away as part of those projects. And that was what sparked us to do an alignment study, to make sure that we had adequate right of way to address these safety concerns long-term. And so what you're seeing here is the alignment study that went through a public process and a few neighborhood meetings that was ultimately approved by the Board and Planning Commission. The estimated cost of this roadway is around $2.1 million. Right now, the way as Vernon said, is that we have a road impact fee. That impact fee is dedicated only to arterial roadways. We have presented options to do collector roads impact fee in the past. However, that number being a little bit higher has prevented us from being able to move forward with that. Amy, if you'll go to the next. This is an illustration showing the different developments, and as I've stated before, Rich &amp; Close and Blossom Park are two that have recently been approved. And when they came through, we felt like the right of way for such a small, small development, the right of way dedication that we were doing was good enough. And it just becomes a question of, when do we stop continuing to allow development along this roadway with horizontal and vertical issues? And unfortunately for Mr. Melz, this was where we said we really need to have this conversation. And so right now, if you go to the next slide, there's around 12.5 miles of collector roadways, which are shown in purple and green, north of Highway 96 and west of Hillsborough Road. There is no funding source for these roadways. Right now, these roadways are typically improved with development by developers as they occur. And so how do we address this long-term? And so the most equitable way that we've come up with to date is that the impact fee pays for upgrades to these roadways, or it's done by the developer. And so right now, that's not an option because a collector impact fee does not exist. And so we've worked hard with the applicant and the developer to try to come up with some possible alternatives if the planning commission and board decide to try to move that forward. But the staff's opinion is that the rezoning should be disapproved, the development should be disapproved, until we find out or figure out a way to fund these improvements and make the safety concerns as these... Address the safety concerns as these developments move forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
To what extent is that safety issue a concern today?
Well, the horizontal curves that you have there are just completely substandard. So as you... As we approve more developments along this corridor, you can expect accidents to increase because your trip generation will increase. It's also heavily biked, and there's very, very limited site distance. And so from an engineering standpoint, we're at a point, knowing that there is absolutely no long-term plan and no funding source for this road, that we can no longer approve development in some of these areas of the city. And so as these rural areas develop out, if we do not have a plan, it will become very difficult. And that's a conversation that we'd like to have with the Board of Mayor and Alderman to try to help facilitate development in the future.
Yeah, it seems as though there's a little bit of a catch-22 here, that there's some current demand or current need for that because of safety, which is not impacted by development. It's just, it is what it is. It's West Haven, it's whoever is going through there. So you got that balanced with the reality of how do you pay for it? So tough a spot. It's a rock and hard place. Okay. Any other comments from the commission? Will we move on to item seven?
Thank you.
Are we in item seven?
Mr. Chairman, and the applicant hasn't spoken yet, so...
That's true. I think we did ask for citizen comments, so we'll move to the applicant. If someone's representing the applicant, can come forward.
My name is Greg Gamble, representing the applicant, this middle. And we are and have been working very closely, again, as I've mentioned before, with Vernon and Paul, and we'll be looking toward BOMA to work with this on a fee-based option for improving the collector road.
All right, thank you. Well, I entertain a motion now, but I would like to have, just for the applicant's benefit, some discussion about the plan itself, if there's any concerns with the plan outside of the concern on the roadway. But I understand there's probably going to be a motion to deny, but regardless, if there's anybody that has a concern about the layout of the plan, I'd love to hear that during the comments. Or is there a motion?
I'm sorry. Has these development come in on some of these rural roads, at what point the applicants notified that this is going to occur? As far as, you know, they come in and we get to a certain point, and then you tell them that we're not going to approve it because of the roadway? What point do we let them know?
You got to let them know at the pre-application meeting, and that's what happened here. At the pre-application meeting, it was brought up. I know that there were some early on planning meetings that they had that wasn't the formal process, where they did sit down with staff, but when they actually had their pre-application meeting, sitting down with staff in a formal manner for the first time, they were told. And we've had that discussion internally amongst our staff numerous times, that once they get through that pre-application meeting, once they get through that first site plan review, it's too late. It's... That's why we got to have a plan from day one and know that plan from our entire staff. So in this case, they were told from day one that this was going to be an issue.
So they just choose to bring it forward anyway? They decided to bring it forward?
Yes, and actually, we asked them to continue to take it forward so that it could highlight this issue, we could have this conversation with the board, and hopefully come up with a long-term plan because, as we stated, it's a great plan. We support it, the land use plan supports it, it's just the safety issue associated with the roadway.
Okay, thank you. So do I have a motion?
I move to recommend disapproval to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I guess I would add, that's part of the thing with this is the plan. I didn't have any use if we had any problems with the plan. Didn't have any problems at all with the plan, it's just the safety issue. And I just wish that more communities would actually do what we're doing, at least what we're doing. We don't decide it, but hopefully, BOMA, where you actually have a plan beforehand, before the problem, we know there's a problem, let's address it before we actually make the problem worse, so.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, didn't we just recently add a multimillion-dollar intersection and red light at that intersection?
At Carlisle and 96 West?
It's the Kirby Park back away from...
So there's been a lot of investment made there that obviously needs to be recognized for next accelerated improvement for that road. I mean, why spend the money on all that intersection if you're not going to, you know, deliver additional density out there?
Well, please remember that all of this is partly based on the idea that that section of Matt Catcher will be built. That is actually the reason that the intersection became so important.
I mean, when one go approve something, though, why did we spend the money there? And why didn't we put the money somewhere else that we... That would deem more appropriate?
Well, since that part of Matt Catcher has been number one on our priority list for at least eight years, I think the idea was that something was going to happen.
Well, not only that, though. That intersection, oh, it's nice, and it's beautiful, and it's big, and it's new, but even that doesn't put a dent in what happens in the mornings. I go to February every Friday morning, and it's still a mess. I mean, it's nice, and I appreciate it, but you're right, I understand what you're saying, but it wasn't like we did anything that wasn't needed, plus some more. You know, that's kind of almost just an initial step because West Haven, you know, that west end of town is humming without Carlisle Lane at all.
It's very concerning that we just put a moratorium on development in that area.
Yeah, I don't understand why we're putting a moratorium on it. We just spent millions of dollars right there. And so we're just... Why didn't we... I mean, Vernon, you could address that, Mr. Chairman.
If I may?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. That's the kind of questions that we wanted to ask, and I just want to emphasize something. We're not in no way putting a moratorium on development. What we're doing is forward-looking at the impact of our decisions and how we can best leverage city funds with private development funds to move development. One of the discussions that has been coming up over the last several years with development professionals and others in the community is trying to direct development where we're combining private development with the city's limited resources. And that's really what this discussion is getting into because we're so fortunate that we have a very historic, well-maintained core of our community, and the community's developed outward in 360 degrees. But we're starting to realize now, as we're getting out into these fringe areas where rural roads exist, that there are smaller properties, so how do we fund those improvements to those roads? Carlisle Lane highlights it. I am so glad is Greg... I am so glad, as Greg has mentioned, that they have brought this forward because we are getting out in front of it, so we're not hindering development and providing equitable opportunities for people to develop their property in accordance with our land use plan and development regulations. It's not an easy, as you can see here, it's not an easy decision. But we do have somebody that wants to develop about eight acres of land that wants to contribute their fair share. Granted, the road impact fees that we collect from development are not going to provide for the improvements to arterial roads or collector roads. But we've got to try to focus our efforts on those areas where we have existing infrastructure, where development potential can be generated to put all those dollars in improving these roads. And that way, we can continue to build our city and maintain the same quality that everybody expects. So, thank you for asking those questions. Hopefully, you see the complexity of it, but are assured, we're all over it. And you're going to be engaged a little bit more with this. It's not easy to resolve, but we are going to figure it out.
So, what is this applicant being told he can come back?
Pardon me?
Is there a timeframe of when this applicant can come back with his plan to develop that area?
Well, we're going to talk to the Alderman and hopefully give him that guidance if he wants to proceed with this plan. He still has the, every property owner still has their existing underlying zoning district that they can develop. And that, that's afforded to this applicant and any other property owner today. What we want to try to do is that in those instances in which a property owner wants to rezone their property in accordance with our land use plan, that we can try to model what is going to be needed to improve those roads and where the revenue is going to be generated to improve certain collector and arterial roads. So, we don't get to this point so late in, in the process. Granted, the applicant was gracious enough to work with us to help us get this in front of you and the Alderman.
And it will go to the Alderman whether we recommend disapproval or not.
You know, hopefully, they'll get some guidance and Mr. Melz knows that he could break it up differently and build some very large, nice homes in that area.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion in second. All in favor of the motion to vote for disapproval or recommend disapproval to Board of Mayor and Alderman, say aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Voting no is Mr. Franks and Mr. Orr. Motion passes. We are on to item number eight, consideration of resolution 2015-80 to be entitled to resolution approving a development plan for 231 Public Square PUD subdivision with one modification of standard. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This project will expand the existing footprint of the First Tennessee Bank Building by bringing it closer to the street and creating a setback consistent with the other three corners of the public square. It'll keep the use of the bank and office within the building and add a restaurant. It proposes the restaurant on the first floor and roof, which requires approval of a fourth floor through a PUD plant. The building height will be lower than it is today and the maximum height at the circulation towers will be within the 50-foot, 56-foot maximum required by the zoning ordinance. The elevations that you have in your iPad are, they are representative of the conditions that were placed on the project at the initial certificate of appropriateness by the Historic Zoning Commission. Those elevations will come back to the Historic Zoning Commission for full approval at the site plan process. This project does have one modification of standards being requested. It's the location of the drive-through structures. The proposed standalone drive-through structure will not advert, staff's, I'm sorry, excuse me. Staff's opinion is that the proposed standalone drive-through structure will not adversely affect the streetscape any more than the permitted attached drive-through structure affects the streetscape today. The site has three street-facing sides and without tearing down the existing building, the drive-through structure cannot be placed behind the principal structure. The structure can queue several cars before it encroaches into the drive aisle of the site and eventually the right-of-way. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the modification of standards and recommends approval of this resolution with conditions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item other than the applicant? All right. Is there someone representing the applicant?
Yes. My name is Matt Taylor, Studio Lead Design Architect on the project, representing Bernie Butler, the applicant.
Okay. You good with all conditions?
We are.
All right. Then I will consider a motion. Move for approval. Second. Moved and seconded before we...
I didn't want to speak for you. We're going for the modification of standards. Thank you.
I'm almost there. All right, so it's been moved and seconded and then let's do and discuss the modification of standard first. This is the relocation of the drive-through structure. Is there a motion for that amendment to the main motion for that modification of standard?
I move approval of the modification of standards one.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded. It's like a three-second.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any discussion on that modification? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Back to the main motion. Any other discussion? There is no...
Mr. Chairman, we looked at this project before and I thought it had a cross-access with the city property. Does, did that get removed?
No, that's still in the project.
Still have it in?
Yes.
I was trying to find that, that site plan.
So, right back in the corner, behind where the drive-through is, near the stair tower to the city's parking garage.
Okay.
Here we go. So, it's, this is the site plan and might be a little bit easier to see, but this is that.
Okay, good, yeah. I was looking for it. I like that. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor?
I was just going to ask, when construction starts, how are you handling all the construction traffic and stuff like that? Because it's kind of tight downtown.
We're developing for that. That's certainly a concern for all of us to contain that as much as we can within the parking lot and the building site. We're trying to, to get to that point, to get, get that plan developed.
This is where we become common with New York and Chicago. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Item number 13.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the Planning Commission members. This proposal is for preliminary plat approval. Twenty-nine lot, single-family subdivision with four lots of open space on 32.5 acres for a density of .89 dwelling units per acre. This property is zoned R2 and meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations. It's located at 1093 Lewisburg Road. The subdivision has 52% open space when 15% is required, excuse me, required. The subdivision will tie in with River Bluff subdivision, which will contribute to the connectivity of developments. The staff recommends approval with conditions.
Okay. All right. So, anyone in the audience that wants to speak to the Nature's Landing subdivision project, come forward. All right, I see none. Is there someone representing the applicant?
Good evening. Sean DeCosta with Civil Site Design Group. We've received staff, staff's comments and conditions and are in agreement and request your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. I will consider a motion.
Move for approval with staff's positions.
A second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item number 16, consideration ordinance 2015-53 to be titled ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the City of Franklin, Chapter 3, Section 3.3, Subsection 3.3.1.3 pertaining to the lot measurements and amend Chapter 3, and I'm not going to go on the rest of that. Staff?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ordinance 2015-53 is a text amendment to the Franklin zoning ordinance to establish a minimum lot frontage requirements for new residential detached lots. The Planning Commission and the Board of Mayor and Alderman have been discussing the subject of compatible lot dimensions and sizes as part of an overall discussion of the infill development that's been occurring within Central Franklin and throughout the city. There's been concern about the development of flag lots and lots that are developed off of access easements that don't have street frontage. That prompted a review of the zoning ordinance and an initial draft of that ordinance was discussed at the Joint Conceptual Workshop in February. Currently, the zoning ordinance just says how wide a lot has to be at the building line, but it does not say how wide it must be at the street. This isn't, has enabled lots to be created that either don't have street frontage at the building line, or they're accessed by an irregular-shaped lot that's a flag lot with very narrow street frontage. As a result, lots have been created that are incompatible and out of character with the established neighborhoods. This ordinance clarifies the definition of lot width and establishes a required minimum lot frontage for detached residential uses. Lots that are located in conventional areas will require the minimum lot frontage to be 80% of the minimum lot width. Lots that are located within traditional areas will require a minimum lot frontage of 40 feet. And lots that are accessed by an alley will require 30 feet of lot frontage. However, I want to note that in both conventional and traditional areas, lots that are located on the turning radius of a cul-de-sac would be exempt from the minimum lot frontage requirement. And also, I'd like to note, just in your packet, you had an attachment, a recommendation of, for this ordinance from the Historic Zoning Commission. Approval of ordinance 2015-53 is recommended.
All right, thank you. Is anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this? All right, I see none, then I will entertain a motion. I'm sorry. Yeah, because we don't have an applicant.
That's right.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
A move that we recommend approval to the board.
Okay. Proper motion, is there a second?
A second.
Second? Okay. Any discussion, Ms. Marsh.
We have an existing lot in one of these, in one of these areas, and the house has been torn down. It's, it is a, the, the frontage of the road is not 40 feet. It's had a house there since 19 whenever. How does this ordinance affect it? It's on Natja Street, by the way. How does this ordinance affect that? House has been torn down last year. Had a house there since 1930s.
Right. It's an existing lot. They're not looking to make any changes to the existing platted lot, so it would not impact that.
Just want to be sure, on the record. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion?
I don't recall visiting this at the workshop. Maybe we did, but it's hard to read those tables and it looked like to me we'd have just some simple illustrations of what we currently have and what an overlay looks like of what we're about to do away with. So, with that said, I don't know if we ought to defer it and get a little bit more, get educated on it a little bit more of how it's going to affect future development.
All right. Any other discussion? I know we, I believe it was in last month's workshop, if I remember right. I know we...
The draft of the ordinance was discussed back in February at a joint conceptual meeting, and this is the first time that it's been back since then, but it was discussed back at that point. Essentially, what you're changing in this ordinance and the different tables is you're adding a field or a line for a minimum lot frontage requirement. Right now, all we require is a minimum lot width. In your staff report, there was a very basic graphic that showed where you measure the two. Lot frontage, obviously, is measured along the distance between the lot lines at the street. The lot width is measured back at the back of the front yard setback. So, the minimum lot frontage has to be maintained until you get to the front yard setback. So, if you have a, for example, an R3 lot that requires a minimum lot frontage of 48 feet, you have 48 feet at the property line along the road. You keep that 48 feet until you get to the front yard setback at, I think it's 25 feet we'll use as an example on a local, local road. Once you get back, get to that point, then, you know, the lot size can change.
So, if you're, if you're narrowing, if you have a narrow down front, are you saying that...
Traditional areas, we're, we're matching the lot width and the lot frontage in, for alley-oat loaded and street-loaded properties. So, that's either 30 or 40 feet if it's on a street or 30 feet on a road. In conventional areas, the ordinance is recommending a percentage of 80%, the lot, the lot frontage has to be 80% of the lot width. So, you're maintaining a regular shape of that property. Because right now, you don't have a requirement to how wide or narrow that lot had to be at the road.
The project that I'm involved in, over on Liberty Pike, is a horseshoe configuration that has a narrow frontage. But as you taper back, you get a wider envelope for the house. With this ordinance, is that...
That would be like...
Is it on the cul-de-sac?
Radius on the cul-de-sac, yeah.
Well, it's kind of like a cul-de-sac, the way it's designed, but it doesn't, that wouldn't apply.
It doesn't. There's something specific in here. Thanks for bringing that up. There's something specific saying if it's a, if it's a radius on a cul-de-sac...
It's exempt.
It's exempt from this. But thank you for bringing that up.
For pie shape.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Well, the other thing that was mentioned here that we haven't said is this would take care of what they're talking about, the flag lots, where you would have a, maybe just the driveway would be the road frontage for the back lot.
Right.
And so, that, that wouldn't be able to happen, is, is what I understand.
Because the 40-foot has to go from the road to the building.
To the building, yeah.
And then the next...
And in conventional areas, it would be a different width, just depending on which zone, district you're talking about.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. All right. Item number 17, I'm going to pass this over to Roger, because I have a potential to be involved in this project if it happens, so I'm going to just get out of the way of that just in case. So, Roger, it's all your floor.
Okay. Item 17, a land use plan amendment, request to move the existing boundary between Central Franklin character areas four and six, located at 405 Eddie Lane.
Mr. Vice Chairman, this land use plan amendment would expand the CFCO4 character area to include one property just north of the existing boundary. The CFCO4 area supports attached or detached residential uses, while the CFCO6 area where the property is currently located supports non-residential uses. Although the property is zoned light industrial, three detached dwelling units are currently located there. A large data center is located to the north and east and is screened from the residential property with heavy landscaping. Given the residential character of the southern section of Eddie Lane and the existing residential use on the property, continued residential use is appropriate. The property could support attached townhomes or single-family dwelling units to serve as a transition between the light industrial and residential areas along Eddie Lane. Additionally, Eddie Lane has no shoulders, curb, or gutter, and the lanes appear to be inadequate for large truck, truck traffic needed in light industrial districts. This, too, makes the area more conducive for residential use rather than light industrial uses. Based on these reasons, the Planning Department recommends approval of the land use plan amendment.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here from the community that would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, then we are the applicant. So, is there a motion then to...
There, there's actually an applicant.
There is? Okay. Yes, Greg.
Hello. My name is Greg Gamble, representing the applicant tonight. This property has been purchased by the owner with the intent of keeping it residential. And today, with the land use plan and the existing zoning of light, light industrial, it cannot be, no improvements can be made to these homes without a land use plan amendment and a rezoning. This is the first step, and we certainly appreciate your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
And a second?
Second.
We have a second? Okay. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion...
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, item number 19, Land Use Plan Amendment relative to the McEwen character area. Staff?
Approximately 2,500 dwelling units have been approved in the area along Corether's Parkway between Murfisburg Road and Long Lane in recent years. As more residential development is planned and constructed in the area, the need for nearby neighborhood commercial uses increases. The distance from Murfisburg Road to Goose Creek bypass is approximately three and a half miles, which is more than three times the recommended distance for proximity to services that is specified in the land use plan. The scale and character of the proposed neighborhood commercial area should be similar to the commercial nodes located in Fieldstone Farms, McKay's Mill, and Retail Commons. The planning department recommends the land use plan be amended to add an additional statement in the McEwen Special Area 6 section. The proposed statement is neighborhood commercial uses are appropriate for the three lots running the connector street between Corether's Parkway and South Corether's Road, and for the lot located immediately to the east of these three lots on the south side of South Corether's Road. If you look in the map that's attached to the staff report on your iPad, you can see the map, and it's also projected on the screen. The four properties are hatched, and they total approximately 17 acres together. If the land use plan amendment passes, the affected property owners will be contacted, and a rezoning to neighborhood commercial zoning district will be recommended. The planning department is the applicant for this particular land use amendment request.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this item? All right, I see none, then is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
That is true stereo. Okay, moved in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. How far is this? You know, it says in our land use plan, we recommend, what was it, 1.5 miles or something?
A one mile.
I mean, how far away is this from anything else?
It would be about one and three-quarters of a mile from Murfisburg Road and about that distance from Goose Creek bypass as well. So it still exceeds the standard, but given that so many residential developments have been approved in this area, and these are kind of the vacant parcels that remain, this is a prime spot to go ahead and prepare for some type of neighborhood commercial use.
Okay, so my next question is, what do we have as a 17-acre tract or approximately that size of commercial development now, out in nowhere land, if you want to say that? I mean, I didn't look to see how.
Well, the one in Fieldstone Farms is very similar in size as well as McKay's Mill.
That's what I wanted to hear. As I say, I didn't try to look it up, and so I was asking you. So, okay, Fieldstone, McKay's Mill?
It's a little smaller, but.
Well, I've got a question.
Please.
Where do you get 17 acres? Because isn't that property to the north of the collector, isn't that zone apartments already?
It is part of a, a part of a PUD development plan right now, but they could come in and revise their PUD, and there have been some discussions with that property owner. We don't know.
That's part of the 17 acres. Okay.
It is. I didn't look at that, I didn't notice that till I widened it out whenever you said that.
All right, any other discussion?
Just a point, that in the tour that we took a couple of Saturdays ago, we stopped at this intersection and looked at these four parcels, and the location halfway from the two extremes seems to lend itself toward a good commercial node, so.
I agree.
Okay, any other comments?
Perfect spot.
All right, then all in favor of this land use plan amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Any other items, staff? Anybody? Last chance. All right, then I will entertain a motion for adjournment. So moves.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.